We are in a public session about to go into executive session to discuss the investigation into the Miriam School incident.
Question, is this an, is that an executive session?
The agenda didn't say executive session.
Does it qualify as an, as an, Peter, would it qualify as an executive session?
I think it needs to be an open session.
All right, all right. So we'll continue an open session. The town of Acton, in response to the COVID-19, is currently following the guidance from the Acton Board of Health, the Massachusetts Department of Public Health, the CDC regarding the virus and steps communities can take to prevent the spread. The town hall is closed to the public. This meeting will be broadcast live, local access cable, on Acton TV channel or streamlining online at the Acton TV YouTube live channel, and audio will be broadcast live on the radio on W A E M 94.9 FM. To participate remotely from a computer, please click on the link below to join the public meeting. Webinar, HTTPS, colon slash zoom.us/j/503918785, or from a telephone dial 646-876-9923, and enter webinar ID 503918785. Telephone unit users may dial line to request to speak after joining the meeting. Computer and app users may use the raise hand feature to request to speak. So our first order of business is citizens' concern.
There's one person with their hand raised.
Okay.
Call on user one.
Hi there, it's Tara calling in from West Acton, and I have a couple of questions, and maybe I can save my comments till later. The question is whether or not we'll be able to speak on the housing production plan, the warrant article list, and the rental assistance program, oh, and the local business relief.
Yes.
Okay, so that's it, I will wait until those time, thank you very much.
Okay, I'll turn the meeting over to Peter.
There's one more now, Joan.
Okay.
Linda, go ahead.
Um, hi, I wanted to thank you all for continuing to work of running the town during this pandemic. When I heard about the town meeting being scheduled for June 29th, my initial reaction was concern about the safety and not really understanding why the meeting had to be held remotely, couldn't be held remotely. Since then, I've had several emails with John Benson, who's been great, I love explaining that the state requires that residents be physically present to vote. And I think it's really unfortunate that the state legislators have not waived this requirement. But since it hasn't, I understand the board has to hold this, has decided to hold the meeting. And John sent me this slide presentation that John, the town manager, put together outlining the safety measures. And it seems like the town is doing the best they can with this circumstances. And I'm disappointed that I won't be able to participate, and I think a lot of people won't be able to participate because they're older or, you know, there won't be childcare, et cetera, et cetera. But I'd like to thank you all for doing the best you can under these circumstances. I have one question, is there a form of residence required to hold the meeting?
No.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Okay.
Now, Joan, there's one more. Barry, go ahead, please.
Did I unmute? Okay.
Yes.
Okay. I'm wondering if the town can consider holding a meeting outdoors rather than in an enclosed space?
We'll discuss that.
That is, may I respond, Joan?
Yes.
That is something we considered, and the town manager, and there are a number of logistics problems with that. And among just my personal concerns is if you hold it during the day, people have to sit in direct sunlight, which may not be good for some people, and if you hold it in the evening, you have to combat insects, and those are not the only, only concerns. So out of all the possibilities, spreading ourselves out through the the large gym and the auditorium seems like the best solution.
Thank you.
Anybody else, David?
That's it.
Okay. All right, Peter, you're up.
Well, did the town manager want to give his update? That's next on the agenda.
It doesn't matter to me. Most of my items are related to COVID, which I can cover later.
Okay.
Thanks.
All right, well, let me kick off the discussion of the independent investigation. Based on the concerns expressed at the January 30th community conversation at the high school auditorium, about those concerns about the January 9th incident where a mother was arrested at the Miriam School, and her son was committed to a mental health evaluation, the selectmen determined to retain an investigator to examine the facts, particularly with regard to whether there was any evidence that racial bias was involved in the incident. And so the board retained attorney Natasha Tidwell, who was with us tonight. And so by way of introduction, let me just review attorney Tidwell's experience and qualifications. For more than 20 years, attorney Tidwell has developed and honed extensive expertise in law enforcement practices as a police officer, federal prosecutor, and as an academic. Her career in law enforcement began in 1993, when as a newly minted police officer in Cambridge, she joined the Bregoning Community Policing Movement as the first school resource officer in the city's only public high school. On her promotion to sergeant, attorney Tidwell was assigned as a detective in the Internal Affairs Division of the Cambridge Police Department, whereas her work as a school resource officer relied on fostering trusting relationships directly with the community. Her tenure in Internal Affairs focused on the critical role in internal accountability and a fair and equitable disciplinary process playing a police department's perceived legitimacy. As a member of the Internal Affairs Division, attorney Tidwell managed a caseload that included the investigation of a fatal police-involved shooting and allegations of excessive force. While navigating constitutional safeguards and collective bargaining agreements, she interviewed countless sworn officers and assisted in the development and implementation of the department's progressive discipline and early intervention policy. In addition to her investigative and development roles in the Internal Affairs Division, attorney Tidwell conducted periodic audits to ensure compliance with existing rules for the use and recording of deadly and non-lethal force. After several years in the division, attorney Tidwell rose to become the first female lieutenant in the history of the Cambridge Police Department. As a lieutenant, she served as Police Academy Director, where she coordinated the departments, training curriculum, and participated in the review and redrafting numerous policies and procedures. After earning a law degree, summa cum laude, while serving as a sergeant and lieutenant in the Cambridge Police Department, attorney Tidwell was selected as one of seven applicants nationwide to serve in the Criminal Division of the Department of Justice as a member of the prestigious Attorney General's Honors Program. As a trial attorney in the Public Integrity Section, attorney Tidwell supervised investigations and litigated public corruption matters throughout the country on behalf of the United States, including cases of bribery and police prejudice. She, attorney Tidwell currently serves as the lead monitor in Ferguson, Missouri, where she oversees implementation of a federal consent decree following a Department of Justice investigation on constitutional police and municipal court practices. She co-chairs the Civil Rights and Civil Liberties Section of the Boston Bar Association. And one thing I learned while I was speaking with Natasha and met her is that she grew up in Cambridge Public Housing, which is an old employer of mine. So with that introduction, let me ask attorney Tidwell to tell us the results of her, what she did, and the result of her investigation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Board, Town Manager Mandorati, Chief Lowes. Before I launch into the work of the investigation and our findings, I wanted to take a moment to applaud town leadership for taking the bold step in determining that an outside and independent lens was warranted here. The willingness to solicit and accept objectivity, regardless of where the chips might fall, is something sorely lacking in today's hyper partisan environment, particularly when issues of race are involved. From the onset, everyone took great pains to protect the independence and integrity of this investigation. I know that it could not have been easy to maintain such a hands-off approach. Hands-off does not mean non-transparent, though, in fact, just the opposite. My colleague, Justin Anfield, and I received everything we asked for, and even some things we didn't ask for, in a timely, professional, and courteous manner. Every department, police, fire, school, went above and beyond to make their personnel available, even amid a global pandemic. The facts summarized in the executive summary and detailed further in the final report are that on January 9th, 2020, at approximately 12:30, Detective Tyler Russell was summoned, Detective Russell, the school resource officer at Miriam, was summoned to the school to assist school officials with juveniles, who were engaged in assault, abuse, and self-harm and endangerment. This was the third consecutive day in which Detective Russell was called to Miriam to assist with juveniles. Detective Russell, in consultation with school officials and with the approval of his direct supervisor, Sergeant Scott Howe, concluded that juvenile posed a substantial risk of physical harm to himself and others, and utilizing his authority under Section 12A of Chapter 123 of the Massachusetts General Laws, Sergeant, I'm sorry, Detective Russell, determined that juvenile was in immediate need of a mental health evaluation. Mother, who arrived at Miriam shortly after Detective Russell, was informed of the proposed course of action and objected. According to police and school officials, mother suggested that she bring juvenile to the hospital rather than having him transported by ambulance. Based on their collective fear for mother's and juvenile's safety, Detective Russell and school officials refused. Mother reportedly became irate and combative. Shortly thereafter, Sergeant Howe arrived along with Acton Fire Department Emergency Medical Technicians. After conferring briefly with juvenile, mother returned to the main hallway. As Detective Russell and Fire Department personnel attended the juvenile in an adjoining office, mother remained in the hallway, voicing her objections. Within a few minutes, she began recording police, fire, and school officials with her cellular telephone. The recording depicts mother repeatedly asking to see juvenile again, while Sergeant Howe enforced her to assist police and fire officials in getting juvenile to the hospital. Mother asserts that she and juvenile are being treated differently because they are black. At one point in the video, she rushes forward to regain entry into the office where juvenile is situated and to engage verbally with school officials. As mother continues moving forward, Sergeant Howe tells her to stop pushing him, and seconds later, as mother lunges forward towards school officials, Sergeant Howe places her under arrest. After a brief struggle, mother is handcuffed, led out of the school building, and brought to the police station. The charges were ultimately dismissed. Fire Department personnel transported juvenile to the hospital by ambulance without incident. We were asked to assess the question of whether mother and juvenile were victims of race-based policing. Before I proceed to our findings, it is crucial that I articulate what I see as a critical distinction here. The question of whether mother and juvenile were discriminated against is different from the question of whether a white, native-born woman and her child would have been treated differently. There was a critical distinction between those two questions. This investigation was instigated to uncover facts related to the first question. Our investigation reveals that the answer is no. That is, there is no evidence to support a finding that mother and juveniles were discriminated against. I will circle back to the second question shortly. As detailed in the executive summary, our investigation included 14 interviews of police, fire, and school personnel. Unfortunately, we were unsuccessful in our attempts to reach mother. We reviewed countless hours of video and closed-circuit camera footage, Acton Police Department policies and procedures, model policies from other jurisdictions, and training materials. As is customary in police internal investigations, we evaluated the officer's conduct using a preponderance of the evidence standard, meaning we had to find whether it was more likely than not that the alleged misconduct occurred. Chief Burrows identified two policies by which to assess the police's response. The first, conduct on becoming an officer, which is defined as the commission of any required act or the omission of any required act, or the commission of any specific act or acts of immoral, improper, disorderly, or intemperate personal conduct, which reflects discredit upon the officer himself, upon his fellow officers, upon the department, or upon the town. The second policy under consideration is neglected duty, which is defined as being absent from duty or failing to take suitable and appropriate police actions when any incident requires police attention or service. As you probably noticed, neither policy expressly prohibits the type of race-based discrimination alleged here, which is discussed further in the recommendations section of our final report. Consistent with best practices in police internal investigations, no complaint investigation should be limited to the allegations that profit it, meaning that we evaluated the entirety of the police response against the backdrop of all related policies, procedures, and training, and included, as an addendum to our findings, an assessment of whether the incident suggests a need for revisions to police department policies, training, or tactics. Here, there are a series of policies governing the conduct of school resource officers, including the memorandum of agreement between the police and school districts. The police department also has policies in place for the proper handling of individuals in crisis, whether juveniles or adults. We found that there were two individuals in crisis that day at Miriam, mother and juvenile. And as such, we assessed the response to both individually. As part of the investigation, we also sought to examine the kinds of training each officer has received, both to assess whether it was appeared to, in this instance, and to identify potential gaps. As part of their crisis intervention training, it appears that both officers have received some instruction in de-escalation. As discussed in our recommendations section, however, we identified a need for greater focus on the intersection between racial equity and the delivery of police services, as well as instruction in de-escalating conflict cross-culturally. In sum, we found that both Detective Russell and Sergeant Howe's responses were generally consistent with police department policies and procedures. There was no evidence that either officer was motivated by racial animus or acting in a discriminatory manner. Having detailed our investigation of the first question, I'll return to the second and more complex question. Mother and juvenile are black. It appears that mother is also an immigrant. All of the decision-makers, from police to fire to school, were white. Stated plainly, would a white, native-born mother and her son be treated differently? The question, or that question for which there is no concrete answer, is central to the ongoing national disconnect between police and communities of color. Intertwined within that disconnect is the prevalence of unconscious and implicit bias. For those of you who don't know, implicit or unconscious bias doesn't mean that individuals are hiding their racial prejudice. A person literally may not know that he or she harbors implicit bias. These biases operate outside of a person's awareness and many times directly contradict their stated beliefs or values. In the delivery of any service, whether school, retail, or more importantly, police, these biases inform who we perceive as threatening, who we associate with criminality, who gets to challenge authority without being perceived as threatening, how and to what extent children are disciplined at school, and finally, who is deserving of empathy. In recent years, the town has undertaken efforts to expand training and opportunities for discussion of these important topics. It is unclear whether and to what extent the police department has joined in these initiatives. We strongly urge them to do so. As our report concludes, if the department undertakes these efforts holistically and not in response to incidents like this one, it can overcome the perception that enhanced training is a punishment for alleged misconduct as opposed to a strategy for fostering and enhancing trusting relationships with a community whose demographics continue to expand. Thank you very much for this opportunity to work with you on this important matter, and I'll take any questions that you might have.
All right, thank you, attorney. Let me just follow up a little bit on that statement, and before we open it up to the other board members and wider audience. You know, this was an unfortunate incident, obviously. Everyone regrets that it happened. But I think attorney Tidwell's ultimate findings that there was no evidence to support a finding that the officer's actions were racially motivated or discriminatory in nature, and that the officer's actions were generally consistent with police department policies and procedures, justifies the community's confidence in the police department operations. Our police, this investigation finds that our police officers are well-trained, they follow the appropriate policies and procedures, they deal with all citizens with empathy and respect. At the same time, it would be a mistake to dismiss the concerns expressed at the community conversation. Clearly, there is an issue in our community. The town needs to recognize those concerns are legitimate. Acton certainly is not immune from the virus of racial injustice. The country has been infected since its founding, and the struggle to overcome bias continues. We all need to be aware that prejudice exists and work to positively combat. And I think that's become obvious with the effect of the COVID-19 crisis on the minority community and low-income persons. They have been ravaged to substantially higher percentages than members of more affluent communities. Shows the discrepancy in the healthcare system and how the system treats low-income and minority community versus more wealthy persons. Those prejudices are real, and they need to be taken head-on. There has been efforts in the town made to organize a group that will deal with these issues. The town itself has made some effort to deal with those issues. Certainly, diversity in the workplace is one way to combat prejudice. In the recent years, the town has successfully hired a black police officer and three females, one of whom is a Hispanic person. So we're making some efforts and some progress. Let me turn it over to John to talk a little bit more about the kinds of efforts that the town is using to deal with these issues.
Thank you. Yes, this is a topic, diversity and inclusion is a topic that's been very important to me in my almost two years here. And there's a lot of work that we've been trying to do, including developing an interdepartmental team to address this issue head-on, both with our physical spaces and the things that we do every day to make sure that they are inclusive and are welcoming to everybody. We've also conducted an annual training. We did one in 2018, focused on Asian culture and some things that we think everybody should understand to help us better serve our community. And this past year, we had a, I guess it was 2019 December, we did a training on implicit bias and focused on things that we can do in the workplace to better recognize some of our bias and work to improve that situation. We were planning to do another one this fall, so we can all be together on a similar topic. And it's something that, it's going to take work. You know, in hiring, we're doing our best to try to improve diversity in our hiring, and it's something we work at with every job ad, and we're going to continue to do that. We lost it here.
We did, okay. I guess with Joan, we turn it back over to you as chair to talk the rest of this agenda.
Are there any other comments from board members? David?
Yes, thank you, Joan. And thank you to attorney Tidwell for this report. I thought it was very good, I read it twice. Very in-depth and thorough report. My, I just have a couple of comments. My goal from the beginning here is that, was to look for things that we might improve, not to point the finger at anybody that was involved here. The Acton Police Department has been a leader in domestic violence and other matters over the years, and I hope the work here can help us improve in these areas with race and other things as well. There are two, those specific things that weren't directly addressed in the report and which I noted from the beginning, and I would just like to comment on. The first was that the mother was arrested, which meant that she had to be led out of her kid's school in handcuffs or in tie wraps. That was just unfortunate. You know, I would like to see us in the future if the person is, doesn't seem to be not a physical threat, that maybe they could have been escorted from the building rather than put in handcuffs. Again, this is just my comment. And the second thing that I noticed throughout the process is the mother had no advocate in this situation. There was no one on the school side, no one in the police department, nobody but her, who appeared on her side. And for her only response, I think, was to be defensive. You know, if such situations happen in the future, I would like to see policies and procedures worked out where a parent like this can have an advocate, you know, you know, someone who can make an attempt to speak for them or help them speak, or whatever. So it's not 10 people against one. It just, again, my comment, thank you.
Anyone else? Dean?
Yes, and thank you for the report. It's a great report, very detailed, and I think it speaks well of our police department. Just a question, probably for the police chief ongoing. Are there going to be any sorts of, now that I think the officers have all been exonerated, is there going to be any ongoing effect on their careers as police officers here in Acton?
The officers just got a copy of this executive report on Friday. I think, I haven't spoken to both of them yet. I think they're going to be happy with the results of it. It was a great opportunity to have somebody outside the agency come in and review the actions that day with our policies and procedures. And to hear that there was no findings of any racial bias towards the actions and that they were within the policies and procedures, they're going to be happy with that. And then we're going to look at this incident and say, you know, like we do with any major incident, how do we do, what can we do better in the future?
Anyone else? Dean?
Yep, I just wanted to thank the chief for that answer.
John?
John?
Yes. Mr. Tidwell, thank you for the thorough and comprehensive report. I think you covered absolutely all of the bases. I have this question, in terms of reaching out to the mother, I believe you said you tried regular mail and, I think, certified mail, and there was no response back to either attempt?
Yes, that's right.
Yes, that's correct. We initially reached out to her via the gentleman who identified himself publicly as her attorney. For those of you who are not attorneys, we have to be very careful when a party, when a person we know is represented by someone and engaging with them as an attorney. And I wanted to be really mindful of that circle there. So we initially went through this individual. He informed us that he was not representing her, but that he would reach out to her or to her new attorney to let her know that he was attempting to contact her. We never heard that on that route to try certified mail and regular mail.
Did you attempt to reach her by telephone, cell phone?
So, that's a, that's a great question, and again, in thinking about how to navigate someone who we believe is represented by someone, the last thing that I want to do is make myself an eyewitness in my own investigation. And so if I were to call the mother on her phone and she were to answer, well, then what happens? If we're not recording the call, or if someone else is not with me when I'm on the call, then it becomes, she's saying one thing and I'm saying that she said a different thing. And so it becomes very difficult in the next stage, just sort of the finding stage, to try to parse out sort of the truth or sort of the details of what happened in that conversation, because you really don't know where it's going to go. Sometimes you're able to say, can we arrange another time when we can talk, when I have my associate with me, or you, and you have your attorney with you, but sometimes people just start talking. And so, you know, without knowing or being able to sort of discern and control what was going to happen on the other end of that call, I thought out of an abundance of caution, since we did have a named person to, an attorney, these things that he represented her or that he could get in contact with her, to leave it that way.
That's an even better answer than a question. And I really want to thank you for, you know, for breaking down and separating the question of whether mother and child were discriminated against versus the other question of whether a white mother and a white child would have been treated differently. Because we got a lot of pushback after the January 30 community meeting from white folk, that this never would have happened if mother and child were white and there was, you know, nothing you can do about it. So thank you for breaking it down the way you did and answering both questions separately.
Well, I'd like to say thank you too. This has been an issue in town, and I think your report helps all of us. I'd like to thank the chief and the town manager for the way they've gone forward with this and for Peter for finding you. Anything else on this issue?
There are people waiting to speak.
Okay.
If people would like to speak, please put your full name and your street name in the chat and raise your hand, and I'll call in. Just waiting for people to put their names and streets in the chat. Okay, I'm going to call on Jennifer Park.
Hi, thanks so much. Yep, and I apologize, I didn't hear the very beginning, but based on those last couple of questions around trying to contact the mother, my question is, it sounds like the investigation was done without any communication or input from the mother or child who was involved in this incident, and that it was done strictly communicating with the police and from the video. Is that true?
So, that's correct, that we did not, we were not able to contact the mother and the child. The interviews included the police officials, fire officials, and school officials, and we also had the video as well.
Okay, thank you. And can I also ask a question of the police chief? Thanks, I appreciate it. So I'm just wondering, from watching that video, there didn't seem to be a whole lot of incident command structure being followed in terms of who was in charge of the whole situation. Is there a normal, normally, do we have some kind of procedures and protocols in place that lay out an incident command structure when involved, when the police are involved in incidents at the school? Such as would normally the school principal be in charge of that situation, or is it that the police are automatically taking over when they come into those situations?
We were called to the school to assist them with the student. So the first officer there was School Resource Officer Tyler Russell, and as things progressed, he called for the sergeant to assist him in that.
Yeah, okay. Thanks. Okay, Charlie, can I, you're on. Tyler, your microphone's open, so you should be able to talk. Maybe his microphone is, is not working. I'll come back to you, Charlie. Tara?
This is Tara. Hello, this is Tara from West Acton. I have a comment and a question, actually two comments. And first of all, I'd like to, if there's anybody here, Alexi or Roland from the Fostering Racial Justice Group, I'd like to know what they think. And I may want to comment again after I hear what they think, like generally will be probably in favor of what they will say. And I do want to thank Natasha, the analysis seems excellent, but I also want to make clear that, that the analysis came from a contract with the town, and the town has a vested interest in ensuring that the findings, you know, there's a financial vested interest in making sure that there's nothing found which would indicate guilt. And I, I'm not saying that you did anything wrong, I'm saying that I just want to make sure that it said, that somebody said it. And I also want to say that the issues about whether or not the treatment would have been different if they were white, I would like her comments on whether the treatment she thought was, just because they're white and then getting misused, you know, abused or whatever, doesn't make it right. And so I would like to hear her comments on how she felt that, because we've had some complaints in town, personal experience, where I thought that the treatment wasn't appropriate. And, you know, whether they're white, black, poor, I think to myself, gosh, if that same person that got, you know, abused, had been poor or of a different racial makeup, may have even been worse than the person that's white and affluent and they were treated poorly. So I'd like to have Natasha's comments about, just in general, how she thought that the treatment in general, not that she's going to be able to say anything, given that she's under contract with the town, I just, if she's able to say anything, that we can do things better, because a lot of progressive towns have more community oversight of police action and they get involved in it. So there's a place to go as opposed to the person, could be the entity, which is the town that has a vested interest in not having anything go to court. So I'd just like to know if she thinks that there are things that we could do to be better as a community, and thank you very much.
Thanks for the question. I'm going to, I, I'm going to try to understand, it's hard to parse this from sort of the facts of what happened, so to say, you know, whether or not someone else would have been treated differently, or whether this was an appropriate way to, whether the conduct here was appropriate in any circumstance. I think the findings that I made were that the officers acted generally consistent with their policies, procedures, and the training of the department. As you said, I think there is room for everyone to do everything better, and we can all, you know, strive to do better. I think a first start is to, we can't separate this from the race of mother and child here and the circumstances under which it was brought. And so one way and a recommendation that we talked about how to do better is to think about ways to foster and trusting and open communications with all communities, whether they be white, black, poor, rich, whatever it is, consistent with the community policing program, but also in recognition that there are certain biases that exist across the spectrum, and the more we can talk about those things, the better we will be on the other side. So our focus is not necessarily on, well, what if, you know, was she, of course, it was a thought on whether she was mistreated, but as I said, the officers acted consistently with the policies and procedures in the department, but the underlying question that she raised in the video is whether or not she would have been treated differently if she were white, if she and the child were white, and that's the question that gets to implicit
All right, I'm trying to unmute you, Charlie.
Here we go.
Yes, good. Charlie, can you hear us now, and can you speak? I guess not, Joan, and there are no other people who have identified themselves as wanting to speak.
Okay, well, let's start with the agenda item for town manager update.
I'm sorry, am I accused at this point, or do I need to stand around? I've got a 12-year-old, he's dying to get my attention, so I'd like to go.
We have some good stuff coming up. No, thank you very much for your help and for your investigation and your presentation tonight.
Yes, thank you so much. Thank you. Good night.
Bye. Thank you, have a good night.
So, for operational updates, so basically shifting gears here, as we have every, every week, the last nine or 10 weeks or so, we've been trying to identify how we're going to keep the community safe and operate the local government during this COVID epidemic. Over the last week, the state has been issuing a ton of guidance. Phase one started last Monday, sort of second tier of phase one started yesterday, and so what it's doing is creating a lot of questions from our businesses, from our residents, from our visitors, is this open, is that open? And we're doing our best to try to communicate that on our website and through signage and just outreach to our business community to make sure that they understand what's going on. We're going to help the meeting again this week, up tomorrow night, I believe, to discuss other items related to some of the questions we've been getting, such as outdoor activities and things like that. Narrow Park, there was a lot of discussion last week about Narrow Park, and we're planning to have it open this week for limited transitional activities, I guess passive recreational, if they call it. We're posting signage, we're going to roll out how to, how we're going to do that with notices tonight or first thing tomorrow. We have other topics that we've been looking at as it relates to our own internal, how we're coming back to businesses and how we're going to start working here in Town Hall, and that work is ongoing. There's other items that are later in the agenda that I look forward to talking more to you about, like the rental relief program, the Small Business Assistance Program, and other items associated with that. So that's my general update.
Okay. I would like to compliment James McCray, the Veterans Agent, and Gail Sawyer on the Memorial Day Celebration, and Mark from Acton TV, and putting it all together. I think it was an excellent program under difficult circumstances, and they all did Housing production plan?
Do we have a quorum of the planning board on hand?
I don't think they were scheduled to start until seven, so we may need to attend to some other business until then.
John is correct, we have it at seven o'clock, and Derek and I are on, so we currently do not have a quorum.
Okay, well, let's wait then.
All right, so the next item is the North Acton Fire Station project?
Thank you. So last week, we talked about the site plan process and whether or not it was required here, and we've identified a solution that we think makes sense. It allows the board to provide its input on the project, but it's not a formal site plan review process. I submitted a memo last week to describe how we may do this, but it's basically, I would ask you tonight to consider voting to support the site and the project as presented on May 12th, and then rely on staff to do the general oversight of compliance with necessary zoning bylaws as they would on a normal municipal use such as this. So I have a draft motion for you to consider unless there's further discussion.
Tita?
You're muted.
Tita?
Hey, there we go. Yeah, I mean, as I said last week, I think it's laudable that the town brings this project before the Board of Selectment for our review and approval. There certainly has been other community forums leading up to this design. As I understand it, none of the butters have raised serious objections. I think what the design shows are just kind of minor differences between the design and what the zoning bylaw requires. I'm learning as I go along, but it's my understanding that those where it doesn't comply strictly with the zoning bylaw, that the town will have to get variances from the Zoning Board of Appeals, the state requirement, but the main differences are the parking lot being too close in the front, the visitors' parking lot being too close to the front yard line, bike rack being located near a sidewalk, which is not allowed under the zoning bylaw, and maybe some landscape issues. Town staff is going to continue to work with the engineers to see if they can bring the entire plan into compliance with the zoning bylaw. So I know the town has worked with the neighbors to address all their concerns, build a sidewalk on the entire Lake Fair Street. So those are kind of my comments on it. I just didn't think that it was appropriate to go through the full formal legal process of a special permit and notifying people of due rights to court and all that, when it's really not required by the zoning bylaw. So I'm very comfortable with this motion.
Dean, did you have your hand up?
Yes, I'd be prepared to read the draft motion into the record, if that's appropriate, and make the motion formally.
Yes, go ahead.
Where a site plan special permit is not required for municipal projects pursuant to Acton zoning bylaw section three, but the North Acton Fire Station design team sought a site plan review for that project from the Board of Selectment, I move that the Board generally approve the site plan presented to the Board on May 12, 2020, and direct the design team to continue to work with the town planning staff to obtain all necessary approvals required for issuance of building permits.
Is there a second? Second. Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Will the clerk call the rule?
Mr. Berry?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Benson?
Aye.
Ms. Gardner?
Aye.
Mr. Trotter?
Aye.
Unanimous.
All right, thank you, everybody. Is that clear, that issue, John?
Yes, thank you very much.
Warrant articles for town meeting?
So, thank you. After the discussion last week where we discussed how to pare down the warrant, we have done that. We've made some revisions to the warrant. We put it in the packet earlier today, I'm not sure if you had a chance to look at it, but it's basically, there are 30 articles, several on consent. I don't know if you wanted to go through them. I think discussions that we're having later in the meeting would... having later in the meeting would, would impact certain articles, um, with regards to the budget and the capital program, um, so we can go through those now, or we can go through those later.
Right, wait, wait.
I guess the question, the, the, one of the, two, two questions that we just want to double check with the board, uh, on, one is, are we comfortable keeping real property disposition, um, the three school street garage property, um, giving the board authorization to dispose of that if there's a project that meets the board's, um, what the board wants to do, do, are we comfortable keeping that on this meeting?
Comments? Comments from the board? David?
Uh, I think, I think we should keep it on the meeting, because, you know, if, uh, it's a bit difficult to find, uh, someone who's interested in that property, and if someone is, uh, we, we might want to act before the, the, uh, next town meeting, so I think it's, uh, worthwhile getting, um, a, a pool before. And, uh, you know, like all the other articles, we can pre-record the, the arguments, um, pro and con, and let people view them before the meeting starts.
Other comments? T.J.?
Uh, it is in the, it is in the South Acton Historic District and in the South Acton Village District, uh, so certainly there's gonna be a lot of interest in any, any, uh, redevelopment on that property, so I think, uh, I'm okay with keeping it on the, uh, the warrant article, but certainly the board should commit itself to community forums involving a lot of public participation and approval of whatever, uh, final, uh, solution ought to be, uh, uh, determined for that. John, you were going to, were you going to recast the RFP and put it out again, or what's the status of that?
Well, um, we, we have, that, that's on hold, uh, like many things, um, that's on hold, but, uh, we have had some interesting conversations, um, with some ideas on, on some people that may be interested in it, so, uh, I think, I think that there would be interest if we, if we did it again.
Dean, did you have your hand up?
Uh, no, I did not, no questions.
All right, so we'll proceed with that on the town meeting warrant.
Okay, great, thank you, and then another one, just to double check, is, um, Article 10, amend the general bylaws related to consumption of alcoholic beverages, the current language, um, it creates some, some confusion on, regarding one-day liquor licenses, and this is meant to clear that up.
Dean, this was your issue?
Yes, um, I, I think it, it could, it, uh, could go fairly quickly, uh, I don't think it's controversial, uh, I think it's important that we, we have that and resolve that issue, uh, as things open up, there are going to be possibly events, um, which might, uh, be enhanced by having, uh, alcohol service available, such as Oktoberfest in West Acton, and some recreation department events that are not at Narrow Park, uh, and who knows what else? I was thinking along the lines of, uh, folks that want to have a, a wedding ceremony at the ob, buridum, that want to have a toast afterwards, they can't do that right now. So, I think we've, we've shown that the selectmen, uh, have the discretion to be able to manage one-day liquor licenses for other, other public properties, and I think we should open it up for, uh, all public properties, so I, I'd want to keep it on.
Any other discussion? T.J.?
I, I'm just wondering why, could we put it on consent? I, we, we're gonna record, uh, as a time, uh, so, you know, what the issues are, if another one we could put on consent, I thought.
I agree with that, and I think it's not gonna be controversial, and if someone wants to hold it, they know.
We can add it to consent, we, just, just putting an asterisk sign here on the index, we can do that if, if the board's comfortable, that it can.
Sounds like.
Uh, great, all right, so two other items, the citizen petitions, um, other, several communities are looking at, um, citizen petitions and, and how to handle them, I did talk to town council, who I think is still here.
Yeah, they say, yeah.
Um, um, there are a few options, I think, one is to just keep it what it is, another is to communicate with them, how we're willing to do so, and make a commitment to put it on the warrant, the next warrant yourselves, or as a board, uh, that's an option as well. Uh, was there a third option? Nina?
Uh, no, can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, typically, what we've been advising the boards to do is to, um, other towns have committed to the citizens that, um, if they're willing to put it off until a subsequent town meeting, that the selectmen would sponsor the article so it got on the warrant without the need for additional signatures and petitioning, but made it clear that the selectmen aren't necessarily taking a position with respect to that particular citizen's petition, that they're just merely making sure if it's a place on the warrant about the additional, um, um, process that maybe needed otherwise. There is a question on whether you could just, um, voluntarily take it off or postpone it now and put it on the board, or, um, without the additional signatures and not as a selectman's article, um, but it's not clear that that's, uh, a wholly unlawful process, like many of the issues we're dealing with right now, um, uh, this has never come up before, so there's no laid-out legal answer or path set forth for us, so, uh, we've been recommending, and I like my bracket, that it simply goes on, or the selectmen commit to putting it on the warrant, but take no position on it.
John, how many articles are there?
Eleven plus consent.
There are 11 citizens petitions?
Oh, no, two, two citizens petitions.
Yeah, okay. David?
Yeah, um, I, I do think that, uh, the last one, that, uh, any zoning article, and both of these are pretty limited in scope, but still they're gonna generate questions, um, and, and they'll need a almost, you know, very likely, uh, accounted vote for, for two-thirds, um, uh, unless it's unanimous, so, um, uh, you know, they could take time, and, uh, m- maybe we would want to enter into that delaying them, uh, or at least asking the sponsors if they would delay them, and we would put them on the next, uh, town meeting, maybe a fall town meeting.
John?
Yes, I would support, uh, David's suggested approach.
Okay, do we need a motion for this?
Would, would, would we move to ask the town manager to work with the sponsors to, uh, delay them, or what do, what do we have to do here in the motion?
Do we need a motion, or can we just go with a general assessment of the board that we postpone these two articles to the next town meeting?
Can, can, can I ask that, maybe this time we don't have a motion, we just ask the town manager to work with the sponsors to see if they'd be amenable to, um, postponing, and at our next meeting we vote to postpone, um, if, if that's what the, uh, sponsors would like, and if the sponsors don't like, then maybe we have to have them this time.
That makes sense to me, I would think, um, before you actually go forward with town meeting, I would want some sort of a vote to memorialize that decision.
Okay, so now it's in John Manchetti's hands.
Yeah, we'll, we'll be in touch with them, and, uh, we'll let you know next week.
Okay. Anything else on town meeting?
Well, we're just, just, just that we're continuing to identify ways to, uh, make sure it's, uh, operated in a safe way, the moderator sent us some guidance that she's working with, uh, from her Moderator's Association on what other communities are doing, and we're gonna implement, uh, several measures, um, and continue to look at it leading up to, uh, about a month from now.
What measures did, did you have in mind? Were you considering?
Just sort of things that we hadn't really thought about, like, uh, giving, making sure people have instructions on when they're leaving, to not leave in the same separated way as they arrived, uh, normally when, when it's almost over, people just scatter, but I think the moderator's gonna have to try to get people to not all leave at the same time, things like that, uh, just logistical things that she's been learning about.
Yeah, from, from the notes, from the emails that we got on our, um, on our, uh, board shell, and ones I got on my, uh, personal email, um, assuring the, the comfort level, particularly of older seniors, um, is, is so crucial.
Yep, that's a priority.
Okay, any other?
Can I just ask one question, John?
Yes.
Um, I, I, at some meeting, go over our recommendations for the articles, and review the selectmen responsible, or is there just a list? I have my notes from when we originally did it, but I just want to make sure that my notes are still correct two months later, um, uh, so, uh, if, if there's just a list of the selectmen responsible and our, um, recommendation, I would love that, um, and then.
Yeah, we have a spreadsheet, we'll, we'll recirculate it with, with the revisions to the warrant and see what we've left left, in terms of articles.
Thank you so much.
Okay. COVID update?
Now, now it's seven o'clock, do we want to return to the, um, Housing Production Plan, uh, item four?
Yeah, we can do that. Who's making the hap, oh, John?
Yeah, so, um, so, um, Derek, uh, does the plant, does the planning board have a, a quorum now?
And John, this is Ray, your Kobe, we have, we have four, but I know John Capetta has joined in the past, he had issues, I'm not sure if he's on the phone, so technically we have four of our five people are currently on. And also, are we gonna be allowed to, to join with video or not, because I know we were blocked before.
Yes.
Well, right now, if I try to join video, it says the host has blocked me. I know I'm ugly, but that's.
Uh, David, there was a question that the, uh, planning, can the planning board, uh, come on live?
It's ta, it's been taken care of, as you can see. Derek?
Well, I'm here, but for some reason, the video is not on.
Is, is there?
Start my video.
Is there a button that says start video in the lower? No, there's Derek, there's Derek. There you go. I see the top of Derek's head there.
I'm present.
Derek, have you heard from John Capetta?
Uh, no.
Because I, from what I can see on the screen, I see Ann Ping, um, and you, and me, and I see Sam, but I don't see John anyplace. So John is required to be for our quorum if we're gonna take any votes.
Let me try to reach him by phone.
Okay.
That raises a question to my mind about processes, is the plan to vote on this final forum tonight? I thought I saw something about June 2nd.
We have another meeting scheduled, we have, and, um, if we can finish it tonight, we're not required to, but we have another meeting scheduled, I think it was for June 9th, but I think it will be June 8th at this point.
Uh, let me see, we don't see you there, even though you are supposed to be a participant. The last five minutes of which meeting? Evidently, I just got John Capetta on the phone here, he got the last five minutes of the previous meeting.
Okay, uh, Derek, what are the last four digits of his phone number?
Eight, six, six, nine.
Okay, yep, I will, I will move him in. So, um, I, I'm gonna allow him to talk, um, but he, he actually can't be moved to a panelist from the phone, but he's, he's now on. Good, I see, I, well, I, I see him, so we now have a quorum of the planning board.
Okay, all right, so, um, so let me try to, uh, frame the con, conversation for where we are at, at this point, to the, to both boards, um, and the, um, audience. We've gotten, uh, a lot of comments, further comments, since the revised, um, draft of the HPP document was, uh, released and put online last Tuesday. Um, you know, seeking further comments are added, revisions to the report, comments that were not included, uh, data issues, so, let me try to break it down this way, what the Housing Production Plan is and what the Housing Production Plan is not. What it is, um, um, is a document that's updated every five years and provided to the Massachusetts Department of Housing and Community Development, and it reports on Acton's progress, um, to achieving the 10% affordable housing threshold, and what steps it's taking to get there. Now, it's a serious document in that, uh, uh, D, DHCD is the organization under the statute that grants, um, a safe harbor. Um, it's also an opportunity, which is what we're in now, a two-year safe harbor, and hopefully we'll get into a, um, a 10-year safe harbor. Um, it provides us, um, the process provides us, provides an opportunity for the community to have a housing discussion. Now, a key piece of this, um, is it's an aspirational, it's both an aspirational document in significant part, and also a practical document. Uh, the DHCD is not going to hold Acton to the strategies that are identified in the HPP, so we could be, we should be mindful of that. Now, what the HPP is not, is it's not a zoning bylaw or regulation, it's not a commitment to, um, by the town to produce housing in any particular order, in any particular manner, in, in any particular timeframe. Um, what the process, this process has allowed, the extension of public comments, uh, through the evening of May 4, um, and the revised, uh, document which was produced last week, um, was what it produced, I think in large part, was, um, the vehicle for housing production of reuse and rehabilitation, um, of existing, uh, facilities that we have, um, as an addition to the traditional buy and build approach. And what that has, you know, brought on, um, um, is evidence of very shared goals that we have as a community, for senior affordable and disabled housing, for group housing, um, for age 55 housing for those members of our community who want to downsize and remain in Acton. And it's very encouraging, because once we hit 10%, which we may well hit later this year, um, is that we have a coalition that can thoughtfully and responsibly, um, sit down and think about housing, um, and move ahead as to how those needs may be addressed. So, um, let's look at it in that framework, have our final comments and questions, and hopefully we will be in a position for both boards to approve the plan this evening. Thank you. I think, I think Ray has some comments, and then I think Liz is gonna answer some of the comments that came up over the last few days.
Yeah, I, I just wanted, I, I did want to add that, um, a lot of work has gone into this document, and I think we've had, you know, very substantial public input, I think the public input has had, uh, has allowed us to reshape it, I think, uh, probably the most important piece was making sure that we emphasize that we consider rehab and reuse and not always buy and build, I think that was probably the most, um, significant thing we heard across the community. I want to emphasize, um, at this point, um, it is an aspirational, it is not a regulation, it is not a bylaw.
So having said that, I think the document is in a position where we should move forward with it and further, you know, refinement and endless furnishing of editing and wordsmithing will not change or substantially modify what it is we're trying to do. So I think the core of what we set out to do has been accomplished. I think it's been done in a very professional fashion, and I think it's been done in a very thoughtful fashion. For those in the public, if you've gone on the site, there is a complete audit of every single comment we've got, what we've done with it, and how we've incorporated into the document. So I just want to emphasize, I think a number of people have got into, oh my God, this is so important because somehow it's going to become a regulation and it's somehow going to be a permitting document. That's not it. It's a statutory requirement. It's gotten a sense of the community of where we are and where we want to be. And I think, John, for the, well, in large part, it's aspirational, but it's also a statutory thing to comply with the state requirements so we can continue to have safe harbor. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I think Liz needs to, would like to speak.
Okay.
Right, hi, Liz Russ. So thank you, John and Ray, for such a good introduction. As John and you both summarized, the HPP is this valuable process not only to identify housing needs and work with the community on goals and strategies, but also a tool to achieve the limited safe harbor that Acton's limited from already. So in that window for the safe harbor, or not the safe harbor, but for the approved Housing Production Plan, is working with us over the summer in that the existing plan expires in August. So the public process, as we know, we had, you know, 750 comments from the forum, maybe from the survey where it started, and even most recently, I think there were 246 individual comments that we reviewed and addressed and assessed as part of the group. So there were many, some very, you know, 13, 14-page documents to piece together and to parse through. As we went through the document, working with Acton, using the DHCD standards and drawing on our past experience, we've done a number of housing production plans in the past. We analyzed the standard 20 or so sources of verifiable data, including some from Acton. And it's our, the critical objective in providing a balanced view. And important to note that we didn't, the data wasn't biased or selected to quote any certain outcome. And we apologize if there's any perception that in fact that that was true. We know from the beginning of the project that this Housing Production Plan comes right before the start of the new census data or the availability of the new census data. So we know that the ultimate data in this regard is already nine years old. So we work with other, again, verifiable information as we can. There's, you know, some of the data does get stale in some of the different sites. We've been able to understand with the health of the residents where we could pick up a different site that might be better. Trulia was an example. So we then went and brought in another site for intermediate rents, as that was a specific item pointed out. So again, in the Housing Production Plan, we strive to report verifiable information. And I was just going to start there, stop there. I mean, there's some detailed questions and responses that we could get through. I don't know if you want to go into more detail or just keep it at this level for right now.
John?
John Benson?
No, I have nothing further.
Okay.
That's Derek.
I think Derek has a hand up.
Derek?
Thanks, Joe. What I want to say is, with those 200-plus comments incorporated into this plan, I congratulate Liz, Jennifer, and the rest of the team in doing what must have been two weeks' worth of work compressed into one week. I've heard some comments from, as a member of the planning board, from two other people who came in late, I guess, and said, this is too, we have further comments. And I just want to say, this plan, as it exists, is good enough for me. I'm not looking for perfection. We can make some changes as we go along. And I say, there is enough in there to tell me that we can have a vote tonight. That is my view. Thank you.
All right. Derek, can I just mention one thing, Joe?
Yes.
Is that, and I think John mentioned this, that this is the best, the best information for this point in time. Certainly, as the next, you know, year goes by, even however much new housing opportunities will come forward that aren't even conceived of in the plan, some of these strategies will change and morph because of the way life does and information and situations change. So this doesn't represent any rigid plan that commits Acton. And so again, just a point in time to guide further actions.
Okay, David, do you want to bring in people? Ray?
Okay. I'll defer to Dean first.
Yes, thank you. I've got just one specific question, reviewing the Red Line that we sent out. On page 94 of the Red Line document, Strategy 13, which appears to be kind of new, discusses an aspiration of not allowing any more fossil fuel infrastructure in the town to be expanded, and talks about air pollution, explosion danger, whatever. And I'm a little puzzled that it got put in here. It seems like sort of an afterthought. It has really nothing to do with production of housing. And even in the comment, it notes that if you do stop the expansion of natural gas infrastructure, as an example, there might have to be waivers put in for purposes of affordable housing. So basically, what you're saying is you want to do something which you know is going to cost more to produce housing. So it seems counterintuitive to put that in there, especially where, you know, this is a real detailed question. It's almost akin to a strategy going in here saying, well, from now on, all affordable housing is going to have vinyl siding on it, or something like that. It just doesn't seem like it fits in here. It seems like an afterthought. And if the authors of this actually believe that fossil fuel is such an existential threat to humanity, why are you saying that you might have exemptions to these regulations for affordable housing? Wouldn't people that live in portable housing, shouldn't they be able to have the same benefit of not being exposed to these imaginary dangers? So I object strongly to this Strategy 13. I think that it should be struck from documents.
So that was put in in a response to a comment received, and what you're referring to are just examples of how Brookline and Concord have gone forward. And again, this is a consideration, so this isn't a locking in at all. This is just to consider that. And there are many steps to providing this kind of thing or implementing it. It would go before town meeting, and it would have its regular process. So again, this is a consideration, and the affordable housing exception is just have one town handle it. So it wasn't to opine on that at all, and it was in response to one of the comments received.
Can I speak now? Yes. Okay, I think, Dean, actually, I think this is an example of what we were talking about, whether it be a regulation. And I think we have gone, we are trying to make sure that people who see this plan understand that we heard them. I think the details behind them, and that may be aspirational, it may not even be realistic, but if we completely ignore it, I think there would be a body of people who'd say the town's not listening to us. So I think it's, to some degree, quote unquote, whether it's an afterthought, it's a reflection that we heard you. Given that this is not a bylaw, it's not, it doesn't put us in stone, it doesn't address all of the issues that you're raising correctly, I think that's the point that John was trying to make in the beginning. This is not, and if we really refined it as if it were a bylaw, I think we'd be having a different discussion. So I think that's the context. I mean, I respect what you said in terms of the context of the particular item itself, and I actually agree with you, but there's a body of people who say, well, but we said something and you didn't hear us, and it's not in the plan. That's kind of the reality. I think that's what we really wanted to make sure, that we've been transparent, and we've heard everybody. And again, that's why I go back to, that's probably why it shows up as 13, whereas we combine the rehab and buy and thing into one saying it's number one. So we've tried to reflect it, but again, this is where we could be here adding for an item at this point with the plan, trying to modify it along those lines.
All right. Other comments, Dean?
Yeah, just so long as you heard me, too. I mean, I appreciate that, you know, you want to appeal to a constituency. I think it's important that you understand that other people have concerns about this.
I agree. I agree.
If someone from, you know, decided that, gee, there isn't a strategy in favor of motherhood and apple pie, why isn't that Strategy 14 here?
Touche.
Anyone else? All right, David, can you bring in people on the phone?
Can I say, if anybody would like to speak, please put your full name and street in the chat. Tara, you're on.
Okay. Tara from West Acton. Thank you very much for the increased focus on rehab and very low on compounding. As we were thinking about the police situation earlier, poverty is a real problem. And with the COVID, it's even worse. So thank you for moving that up in the timeline. I respect that it's aspirational, and I hope we've moved past the idea of labeling something as aspirational to get it passed, and then later allowing officials to act like it was voted in as a mandate. That happened with the CWRMP, where we were told at town meeting, don't worry, it's just to satisfy this thing at the state that we have to do for our loan, and nothing in it is a mandate. In fact, there was an amendment brought forth at town meeting. I brought that forth, and it was passed, that nothing in the document was a mandate. And yet, still, the certain groups brought forward statements in the CWRMP as if it was a mandate. So I appreciate that we've got that assurance on tape now, so that's nice. I like that. The ability to tape back then was difficult, so we didn't have that. And I have seen some of the memos coming in relative to certain data points, and I'm strongly in support of looking those over as we move forward in a collaborative way. And I really appreciate John Benson taking the lead in that. He's been very good at taking comments and assuring folks that they'll be addressed. But hopefully, that will, they'll come to bear in the months coming. I love the idea of an appendix with all the comments. I noticed that the folder with the comments didn't have anything past early May. So I'd like all the comments to show up someplace. Relative to my comment about the paragraph about that people who want to limit growth are unwelcoming, I think that that's not based on any evidence. In fact, if the evidence that was cited was quite the contrary. And so I feel like in any kind of official document, it shouldn't be putting forth bias like that and something that's judgmental based on shaky evidence that turns out not to even be true. So I really appreciate the chart of comments, and I hope that is also part of the appendix, because most of mine were marked closed with no explanation and no change that seems apparent to me. But again, hopefully, people will move forward with a spirit of collaboration. I am willing to, you know, stand aside on a lot of these issues that I had in my 38-page comments because of the, you know, the primarily rehab in goal one. That took care of a lot of my concerns, but I do have problems with certain words being put forth in official documents that seem either judgmental or misuse of data or, you know, just... So I'm a little uncomfortable with that, but where you, I wish, I hope that you can put in the actual document that is aspirational and that it is by no means a mandate. Relative to the gas, I think it's unfortunate that you feel that way, that we have officials that feel that way and consider natural gas, the dangers of natural gas to be imaginary dangers. And I hope that that changes in the future. And if you're going to add a paragraph that adds a whole new goal, I feel like you should at least take out the very offended paragraph that considers people unwelcoming. Thank you very much.
Okay. Next.
There are no more people with their hands raised and no more people have identified themselves in the chat, so I think we're done.
Okay.
Joan?
John?
Yeah. So if there are no further comments from the board, I would, I would move that the Board of the Selectmen formally adopt the Housing Production Plan dated May 19th, 2020, together with the appendix containing the, all comments received and disposition of those comments.
Is there a second?
Second.
Who seconded?
David.
Derek Chen?
No, your vote is separate, Derek.
Oh, sorry.
David seconded.
Okay, so motion made and seconded, further discussion on the Board of Selectmen. All votes, oh, will the clerk call the roll?
Mr. Berry?
You're muted, Peter. Still muted.
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Benson?
Aye.
Ms. Gardner?
Aye.
Mr. Charter?
Nay.
Four to one.
Motion carries. Now, Ray, are you going to take a vote?
Yes, as the planning board participated in the process, I would like to make a motion for the planning board that we adopt the, May 19th is the day of the HPP with the associated appendices as presented.
Second.
Do we need a second on the planning board?
I think so.
Second, John.
John Capetta? Was a second made by John Capetta?
Yes.
Yep. That was me. Yep, thank you.
So the call, the call the roll?
Derek Chen, chairman, I'll call roll. I vote aye. Ray Acoby?
I vote aye.
John Capetta?
John Capetta votes aye as well.
Ann Ping Lou?
Ann Ping Lou voted a nay.
That was a negative?
Yep.
And just to clarify, so everybody knows, because of Ann Ping voting nay, that means it doesn't pass. That's the issue we are with, we need a five to zero vote, I believe. If we don't get a five to zero vote, it doesn't pass.
Let me have Sam Badger give his input.
Sam, my cross is aye.
So it's four to one, and because we need five to nothing, the planning board evidently do not...
Why? Can I just ask why you need the five to...
We need, I believe on this, Liz, we needed what's referred to as a supermajority.
Both Roland and Kristen say you need a simple majority.
Oh, okay, then never mind. I stand corrected, sorry.
Thank you very much, Ray.
Thank you, sorry.
So Derek, do you want to declare the vote?
Vote was four to one in favor, and that passes.
Okay. Well, good work all around to everyone.
Well, thank you so much for all your time and effort to review and hear comments. It's a much stronger document for that, and we will add the appendices, appendix as noted, and submit it to DHCD tomorrow.
Thank you.
Okay, I guess we can leave then. Yes.
Don't, don't, don't forget to adjourn.
We, we, I'm sorry?
Good, good, I'm hearing a motion to adjourn.
We have to, uh, we have to vote to leave.
Motion to adjourn.
Uh, I'll second the motion to adjourn, the planning board. Planning board, I will call the roll call vote to adjourn. Derek Chen says aye. Ray Acubi?
Aye.
John Capetta?
Aye.
Anping Lu?
Aye.
Sam Badger?
Aye.
Vote is five to nothing, you close the meeting of the planning board. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much.
I know.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Okay. Now we're back to the Board of Selectmen agenda. Up, updates on COVID? Is John back with us?
Yes, I just, uh, just to, uh, follow up on what I mentioned earlier, uh, Board of Health last week voted to allow or to allow us to reopen NARA when we're ready to do so. We've been working with staff throughout the weekend and through today to make sure we were ready. And we published just now the, the restrictions that will have in place on NARA in a way that we feel comfortable opening, um, as of tomorrow. And those restrictions are, um, that will have one-way directions on the walking paths, that will encourage or require people to stay home if they're sick. Um, athletic fields will only be used by people within the same household and for non-contact sports. Face covering is a mask will be required per COVID order, uh, by the state when you can't keep social distancing. We're gonna have a signage put up to make sure people know all these things. And we're gonna make sure people leave room for each other when they're passing if people are walking or, or running. And, uh, we're gonna, you know, we're gonna continue to monitor, we're still waiting to hear from the state on some of the bigger things that happen at NARA this summer, like summer camp and things like that. And we're gonna, we're closely monitoring that. Uh, we expect it here, hopefully by next week, uh, from the state on that one.
John, what about people from out of town using NARA?
Yeah, once it's open, it's open.
Okay.
And, um, it's public park and, um, and we'll be, uh, on our way.
Okay.
So, John, um, NARA reopens, walking trails are open, social distance there. The fields, um, are, are open for, for family games and no contact sports.
Yes, and I believe they are, uh, Board of Health is, that is, is talking about tennis tomorrow. I would be getting a lot of questions about tennis. And I think they'll be looking at that tomorrow night.
Okay.
But Dean has his hand up.
Dean?
Yeah, John, I was reading a, uh, an article today, I believe it was in town of Sherborne. Um, or it might have been Dover, has a, a town pond somewhat similar to NARA pond. And they took a vote that they would not, uh, allow, uh, out-of-towners to buy memberships for this year in an attempt to try to reduce the crowding at the ponds. Um, there's been any discussion of that at NARA pond, because I know there's, there are quite a few non-resident, uh, ticket holders in the past.
I don't know that that's, it may have been discussed, uh, and I don't know about it, but I can certainly look into that for you.
Thank you.
All right, the proposed rental assistance program?
Thank you. Uh, so as, as part of, uh, what, what we've been doing and the, and the feedback we've been getting from the Board of Selectmen and, and community members is uh, to try to find different ways to help our residents and businesses. So there are three things that, uh, I'm gonna present tonight for ways that we believe we can use existing resources or the new resources made available to us through the CARES Act to try to provide some relief. This first program is residential rental assistance program. And we would propose to do it, uh, using the Regional Housing Services Office to administer it. And it would provide, uh, grants to, on a monthly basis, uh, based on certain, um, application rules, um, to help, so help people with rent over a three, uh, or four-month period. And it would be households in, in Acton. And they would have to demonstrate need and it's a, it's a formula that they've been working on. Uh, I, I think we talked about it in the past about some communities are using CPA funding for this. Uh, we are not proposing to do that. We're proposing to use CARES Act funding. And, uh, Town Council has given us the guidance that it is a, it is an appropriate, it is an appropriate use for it's appropriate to use it for this purpose, as long as the Board of Selectmen takes a vote. And, and says so, that this is what we're gonna use it for. So the rental assistance program, I, I would like the board tonight to, uh, consider spending a, spending a amount fifty to seventy-five thousand to put towards this program and we'll see how it goes. Uh, we have it set up to start June first. Uh, Liz, who was here earlier, uh, we've been working with and her team would help, would, would run the whole thing. And we would, um, be able to help, uh, several households, uh, in our community.
Questions? David?
Um, I, Town Council also had her hand up. I don't know if you want to take her first?
Sure.
Thanks, David. I just had a clarifying, um, statement I wanted to make before you all took any votes. What we would need from the Board of Selectmen in order to be eligible to use of CARES Act funding is that, um, the program and the grant program you're envisioning is necessary. Um, and state the, the reason and the public purpose why this funding is, uh, necessary expenditure for town. So that's the, that's the key words I want to see used there.
Say that again? It was, the key words were?
Necessary.
Okay.
And you should also state the public purpose, which John basically did.
Yeah, yes, I, I have a couple of questions for, uh, town manager. Um, eh, how are the criteria being developed as to what households to, um, offer assistance to?
Uh, yes, it's, it's need-based. Um, and actually, if it's okay with the chair, I'd like to ask Liz Russ to help me explain it.
Yes.
Liz, are you out there? There you are.
Yeah, I'm back in. Uh, so we developed this program for use of all the RHSO communities as they, as they wish. Um, with standard criteria and reviewed it with Anderson Krueger as, as Congress Town Council. Um, this has been done in conjunction with Mass Housing Partnership at the state level. So it's gotten some, some interest in the review. It's set up as a, what a, more of a rent booster kind of program. So it's a five hundred dollar, um, assistance for a two-bedroom apartment, less for one bedroom, a little bit more for three-bedroom. So it's not like section eight, which is, you know, in the thousands of dollars. So this, you have to have some income. You have to demonstrate that you have lost income due to COVID. So there's that kind of a before and after piece, um, to apply and it's a four-month grant window. Um, and so there's, um, an income eligibility of up to a hundred percent of AMI. And there's a maximum rent level that correlates to the fair market rents. Um, so it's really for lower price, uh, or lower rent apartments. Does that help, David, to give us something?
Yes, it does. And so if I just do some quick math and we get seventy, uh, five thousand dollars and five hundred dollars per household per month for three months, just, I was, just, just. Well, I was just taking some round numbers. We'd be able to do five households. So if it was four months, probably four households, I'd, I'd have to do the math. But, um, so, um,
More than that, it's, uh, each household, let's say it's a two-bedroom household, would be a two thousand dollar grant, uh, grant amount. So that would be like forty households.
Oh, I see. Yes, I'm sorry. I'll buy a desk mobile. Okay, great. Yeah, great. Thank you.
Okay, uh, Peter?
Hello? I'm muted.
All right, so you're talking about seventy-five to a hundred thousand, Tom? You have to determine the amount, obviously, that the town wants to commit to this.
Yeah, I, I had, uh, mentioned fifty to seventy-five, but it's, I just want to get the board's, uh, uh, amount that the board, with it as, as, as we do. It's only, it's, the money is only available from March, or, or, or in this case for this program, from June to December. Um, so we, it would be, um, we just want, I want to make sure that we have a number that you're comfortable with, uh, starting out. And we'd like to start on June first if possible.
Yeah, does the RHSO have staff to do this or is there gonna be more administrative costs for hiring people in the state building?
No, we're gonna be doing this out of the RHSO membership hours that, uh, participating towns already have. And we'll, we don't really know what the, uh, what the workload is gonna be, how many applications really would be received, but we'll work with Acton to, um, to see if additional hours would be required, whether it would be part of the RHSO service.
Okay, and so I understand that you're, you, people would be eligible up to a hundred percent of the, uh, median income limits here, this chart here you have here. Is that for the rental assistance?
I'm sorry, can you ask the question again?
You, people would be eligible up to a hundred percent of the median income, this chart that you have here? Is there any way to direct, um, a cer- a certain amount of the money to very low income or low income, uh, this, these are pretty high numbers. These are median, these are, uh, moderate income families. Is there any way to, to direct this assistance to lower income or very low income families?
Uh, the program as designed is, um, is open to all who make that amount and less. So there's not a, there's not a priority based on lower income amounts. There are other programs that are available to lower income households that are not this particular program. The RAP program at the state level is oriented to fifty percent AMI. There's a lot of state funding that's gone into that program. Um, this particular income level is unserved in terms of availability. I believe the, um, the United Way program also available in Acton, the, uh, Acton Block Pro United Way Grant Program that's in terms of a social worker, that's up to sixty percent AMI. So I think there's some other options. Um, but that's how this pro, this particular program is laid out this way.
Okay, and then just a question. Um, I mean, I've done, I've done some work on, on this CARES Act. I don't think that, uh, undocumented immigrants are eligible for the Pay Tax Protection Program. We have a policy in Acton of not asking, um, uh, immigration status. Uh, is there anything that, do we know whether, uh, someone who is, uh, a non-documented immigrant would be eligible in this program? Or whether that not, whether this will out?
I think the CARES funds, um, require, um, legal residency. So it's really about the source of funds when we're using this program. This program's draft is gonna be rolled out in Sudbury, this exact program. They're using different funds that won't require that CPA funds don't require it. So it's really a source of funds issued for that particular requirement.
Okay, and this, this particular program wouldn't allow public access?
For Acton, it will not allow it.
That means we gotta ask the question, I guess, huh?
Um, yes, and so we're working on exactly that. Mm-hmm.
That goes against the selectman's policy, but I don't know what you can do about it, so. Okay.
Any other question?
Uh, would the, uh, uh, gr- uh, grant go the, the family or do you, is the landlord?
So there's, uh, it would be the landlord directly as a tri-party, uh, agreement between in the town, the landlord that, that specifies the amount and the payment.
That's similar to what, the way the, um, 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 United Way is doing with their COVID nineteen rental.
That's the general way to do that. And we've worked through the participation agreement with the town council.
And, and just for, for the audience, this, this number that we're gonna determine would be come at, would come out of the two point one million dollars that the state, that the, that Acton was granted, um, from a, a five hundred million dollar fund that the state established from the, um, two point seven billion dollar CARES fund they received. John, how, like, should we go to a hundred?
Um, I, I think, I don't have a, a, a sense of the need. I, I was thinking seventy-five thousand, but if, uh, a hundred, we could certainly cap it at a hundred and, and use how much, uh, we need.
All right.
Uh, yeah, the other option is to just start, we could always add to it. I, do you think that the town expenses, the people that spent for the two million plus, uh, are gonna use all of that money or is that your participation?
I don't, um, at this point, we are planning several things to, to draft, operate. Uh, at this point, we're not near to an end. Uh, there is the potential, uh, someday down the road that it may be used for other needs that we have as a community, but that information is available to us, yes. So I, I, I would recommend that we try to be careful with how we allocate this until we know the full story on what it may be used for in the future. But in terms of our short-term needs, this is something that, um, I think I'm recommending that we do in an, an appropriate amount now. Uh, and then the next program I was gonna talk to you about as well. And then just keep an eye on, on things. We have two, two application rounds. The first round is due June fourth, I think, uh, which is pretty much next week. So, and then we have another shot at it later this summer to ask again for another, um, installment.
That's from the state?
The state is managing the CARES money, yes.
So do we have to go to the state with each program and say, we want one hundred thousand dollars for this particular rental assistance program and spell out what the program is?
Yes, yes, there's an application, uh, a pretty detailed application that we, that we're gonna fill out with all the expenses that we are gonna assign to this program. And there's actually, it's, since rental assistance is a, is a known and re- and, um, definite thing, you can use this for, it's actually a line on the form. Uh, the program I'm gonna talk to you about next isn't necessarily on the form, but it would fit under other, uh, which, which is, uh, where we'd put that. So we do have to put in there. And then it's just subject to a compliance audit, which, uh, we're comfortable with.
Okay.
Bruce?
Peter?
Peter?
Ray?
All right, uh, hold on, I gotta.
Does Dana have a comment?
Board of Selectmen, what's up?
Uh, how people who are far from behind, um, are eligible for these funds. The governor has issued no blinking, uh, while this emergency is ongoing, but people's arrears be building up in the meantime, so.
We, yeah, Laura, uh, reported that she did have a, send those claims or those, um, requests a- at the end of the spring. Um, but wasn't, um, it wasn't overtaxing our resources that we have. But yeah, we'll, we'll definitely look into that if necessary to add, add that to the mix.
Your motion?
I'll, I'll move the, uh, the town committee, uh, fifty dollar CARES fund, uh, to, uh, retain the regional housing services to run a, uh, rental assistance.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, motion made. Then?
I think we didn't follow the council's thinking, right? Uh, we, we need to say in this motion I offer as a family amendment, um, uh, sorry, this is just from memory, you know, that this, that funding is, uh, uh, necessary for, um, uh, uh, the citizens of the town and required for the town because of the COVID nineteen emergency?
I'll, I'll add that and add, uh, that this, I mean, uh, constitutes a public purpose.
Okay. Will the clerk call the roll?
Mr. Berry?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Benson?
Aye.
Ms. Gardner?
Aye.
Mr. Trotter?
Aye, unanimous.
Thank you very much. And Liz, I'll be in touch, uh, tomorrow.
Very, very good.
In fact, I've been, um, well, we're between programs and, and try to clarify, um, or let people. um or let people know that our office will continue to work with Liz and we get to um the thought of an answer to any specific questions with respect to the eligible um residents, um, and asylum seekers or various different statuses of uh our business for the funding with this program and for other programs as well, but the John's ones talked about.
Thank you.
We'll continue to work with Liz on that.
Okay, local business relief, John?
Yes, thank you. So um a second program uh that we I wanted to present to you tonight is something that the boards were talking about for a a few weeks now. And I think up until just recently, up until just recently, we weren't sure that there was a funding source for this program. But now we're we're certain that uh the CARES Act funding may be used for this purpose. So uh the difference between this small business relief program and the one we just talked about is that uh RHSO has been working for a month, or I don't know how long they've been working, but for a period of time. And they've worked with council and they put together a great program with an application and a very detailed plan. Uh, we're not as far along in the planning and and the design of this program, but we wanted to bring it to you now to make sure that it's something you were comfortable with in concept. Uh, and if you had any input for how we finalize uh such a program. So the idea is that we would provide grants to small businesses uh of up to four thousand dollars. And we would criteria for who or which businesses fit into the category of small business. In this case, we're saying fewer than thirty-five employees, uh one point five million in annual revenue. Uh, they have to be proven proven to be in Acton uh in certain opening business. Uh, they'd have to be good standing, otherwise um we would take we would have to really be careful to um include in the application information about whether or not the business had access or accepted any other federal funding. Uh, because I think the biggest issue that we run into um with doing local business relief through the CARES Act is that if we find that if a business, if we give a grant to a business and they use it for something that they also got funding from another federal program for, we may be in a position to not um pass a compliance audit and have to give the money back. Uh, so we wanna just be very careful that we lay out there that this is only for things that weren't covered otherwise. And uh it's for things to help you get through this pandemic, uh PPE retrofits to your um place. Um, training, certain real estate related costs that aren't covered by other programs, for example, the PPE program that you've all heard a lot about. I believe that covers some rental um and real estate expenses. So if someone has that, then we wouldn't, they wouldn't be able to apply for this as well. But if they didn't get that, they would. Um, the number that we talked about including now is four thousand. Um, I think that there are several different ways to look at this. Um, but I think this is a good start to try to help people in the short term, uh over the next few months. As I mentioned, this is something that I'm looking to get into the June fourth um application for CARES Act. And so I'd ask for an initial amount, and if if the town finds, if we find that you know, way more or 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 not, we can certainly ask for more and do more. Uh, but the other thing that uh I wanna make sure is that it's a manageable project, a manageable manageable scope. As selectman Barry asked earlier, are we gonna need administrative staff to run the uh rental assistance? Fortunately, we're we don't have to, we have a contract with RHSO and they're very good at it. Uh, for this program, w- we're not really in the group writing giving business, but we're gonna try to do it because if we we think it's important and we want your support. Uh, we want, but we don't wanna take on too much initially, and we know that we're able to do it. So that's sort of the high level rate of thinking. And I look forward to your feedback. And I was thinking in the same range of seventy-five thousand or so um to get started with programs, to see to see what we can do with it.
Yeah, John?
Wait a minute, Dave, David had his hand up. Um, I was just gonna ask a a a couple of questions. If you avoid the conflict with their uh federal understanding and these um ten thousand dollars a month, um, some rental assistance, which amounted, say, to four thousand dollars uh from the PPE program, can we offer them another four thousand dollars, uh maybe to because their business is completely shut down? Um, as as long as we can exceed the remainder was, or can we not for the any more rental assistance if they got the PPE rental assistance?
Well, that's a good question. I I I think we'd have to look at that closely. I think our initial goal is to try to help people that didn't get that initial four thousand and try to give them something. Uh, for, because a lot of people, I think some people were able to access those funds, but not everybody did. Uh, I don't know if Nina, if you have any further guidance on on that collection?
No, it's a good question. I think I would say that um if they were, how I initially read the guidance is that if they were eligible for funds from another pot of money, whether they got it or not, that type would be uh they use that type of funding without being eligible as that. So for instance, um, if someone was eligible to get at the monthly per um its work uh and make a is what we wanna supplement that by reading that they initially are suited for something else, like the capital expenditure. Uh, uh, it'd be designed for business because of social distancing requirements and protocols. Um, but I can take a look at where it can be used to to supplement that. And it certainly can be used for people that did not receive any PPP funding or any other law, law.
Yeah. I just question John if that's okay. Um, the um, there are a couple of restaurants in town that are parts of very small chain. It's like one other station and the other might handful of locations. I mean, the limit was uh John of a, you know, a million and a half of revenue or just their acting location and location base, they're still eligible if they have an active presence, so um.
Yeah, tho- those are good questions that we we should certainly um finalize the answers to, um.
So I I I I'll just say that my suggestion, uh and I've got, you know, absolutely committed to it, is that the amount of revenue that they have in Acton needs to be, you know, you know, proportional, and that there should be a right, um, we don't have any huge companies, like we don't have a our Walmart or anything, but um it so that there, I think there should be a limit for the corporation that owns them. And you know, some kind of adjustment for whether all their business is in Acton or only part of.
Okay, thank you.
John? Yeah, um, uh, John, when you say related costs could be rent?
Yeah, I I I was thinking rent or if there's sort of um condo fees, I don't know what you call it in a business, but.
Because, yeah, because um, uh, you know, m- m- most of the the businesses in Acton, they they're hurting for rent, and that's generally their um their biggest cost. So if it could be carved out that this, these grants can be used if they want to exclusively for rent.
Mhm.
Um, it was a um, um in in Vermont, they did it a little bit differently, where the governor took four hundred million of one point seven mil- uh, one point seven billion that he he received and put it to an economic recovery package. And um one hundred and fifty million dollars was called emergency action grants. And those grant proceeds may be used for rent, mortgage interest payments, utilities, inventory, and other essential operating expenses. So to Nina, may we craft a program around that model where the grants could be used specifically for those items? Those seem real and down to earth. Want me to read them again?
Yeah, I mean, essentially the town can craft its grant programs um anywhere it wants, provided that the funds are on on the eligibility list for um otherwise be necessary by the town, so what was that list again?
Okay, so um, the it was the 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 grant proceeds may be used for rent, mortgage interest payments, utilities, inventory, and other essential operating expenses. I mean, it seems kinda simple and clear, and I assume the governor probably cleared that with bill count. So, you know, the same CARES funds that were used, they're used to cover these things, these.
Just to be clear, the guidance that we're looking at is there's kind of two levels of guidance. You have guidance from the the treasury at the federal level of what the CARES act funds can be used for, and many of the guidance coming out of the state DOR. The state DOR is more restricted, you know, guidance than the federal treasure treasury is.
Yeah, I stole that from your memo, yeah.
Um, so, uh I can look at this, I mean, it 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 is something that um again, DOR has not uh necessarily uh prohibited, but they said they're not encouraging programs other than um um the ones that are on their list. Um, that said, many other communities are are considering them. So I think we've only looked at the programs that John has um prepared and suggested uh as far as determining whether those are eligible. You're talking about a much broader set now, but um you're certainly happy to look into and and confirm that they're eligible. Uh, but again, as John said, you wanna be really careful about this because you don't wanna get hung up in an audit after the fact and then
Yeah.
hook to these funds. So I'm happy to look into that, I think, again, as you danced earlier.
So those are just simple, straightforward costs with with some flexibility, um.
Yeah, the well, the broader you get, of course, the the more administratively difficult it is to manage. So I think that um, you know, John probably has concerns on that front, but wow, looking at a broad swath of of programs like that.
I- i- is the DOR kind of encouraging uh towns to sort of hold off using this money in the hope that the federal government will make um the CARES program less restrictive, so the monies allocated to the town may be used for revenue shortfalls? Is that what we're kind of looking out into the future on?
That is what I have been hearing.
Okay, okay. Um, are are there members um of the Economic Development Committee um in in the, I I see Mike Majors um is 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 here. Um, he's also on the Finance Committee. Um, the Economic Development Committee is one of the committees that's one of my liaison groups, actually, I'm I'm a member of the group. And, you know, there's a real urgency out there um to help our local businesses, you know, along two-way and throughout the town that have been deemed non-essential, you know, businesses from the outset, and that label hasn't been lifted. Um, and, you know, the the the, you know, they're struggling against the competition that they've been receiving, you know, from online businesses. And um, you know, this to some, you know, may be um, you know, a death knell where they where they can't reopen. So, you know, all the help that we can give them, um, you know, to keep them clean, uh to getting them to reopen, um, is a i- is a very important, you know, thing to the town. That's, you know, one, many, you know, uh others on the committee say, you know, um, and they're they're, it's it's right about it that it's one of the things that people like about Acton, the small shops, and how do we keep them going? So infusion's fast is a big thing. So, you know, I would up this, you know, right now to, you know, a hundred thousand um dollars, and if there are, you know, lots of takers, to increase it above that. Peter, you had your hand up?
I forget, I I uh I was under the impression that the Pay Tech Paycheck Protection Program, which is another part of the CARES Act, could be used to pay rent under the payroll provisions, um, utilities, even I thought mortgage payments. So you're saying, Nina, if it, if if that's what that money can be used for, even if it can't get any? That we can't use it for those purposes under this coronavirus relief funds?
No, no, it's just to prevent double dipping. Um, so I don't know if um, I don't know if you've received any amount from PPP. If then all of the uses under PPP are then off limits? Or if it's just we need to show expenses or costs over and above what you've received? I I don't know the kind of administrative details there.
Okay, uh what John Regan has just flashed up, the PPP cannot be used for more than twenty, twenty-five percent of the award can be used for for rent. It's designed for uh preserving payroll, I think seventy-five percent is to go for.
Right.
Keep people on the payroll.
So that doesn't, you you need to figure out the answer to that question, I guess, you know, yeah.
John, there are two people with their hands raised too.
Okay, let's recognize them.
That's a ready note, yeah.
John Regan?
Yeah, thank you. So I'm John Regan, I'm the um, I've lived in Acton for twenty-three years, and I'm the owner of Hidden Sports, which is on uh Great Road. Uh, first of all, the coronavirus started severely affecting our business in the second week of March. So we're now approaching almost three months. My business is down ninety-seven percent. Um, most restaurants in town, I'm I'm also on the board of a restaurant software company, even if they're open, they're down forty-five percent on average. You know, some were, if you, and that does not include the ones that are shut down. So the first thing I wanna say to you is that speed, speed, speed. We are three months into this. Like, if we're getting two point one million, I I don't understand why we're talking about fifty thousand, seventy-five thousand, hundred thousand dollars. Like, what, I would ask the board to think about what you're saving it for. Like, now is the time, business owners do not sit here with months and months of savings and just, oh, we'll just fund things. You know, they are going to shut down. I talked to two business owners within the last two weeks, they're on the verge of shutting down. Permanent, and once they're permanent, that's it, and no one's moving it. And I I've been meaning, and I'm gonna send around to the board of selectmen, how many for lease signs we already have in it. And I think you'll be stark when you start understanding that, you know, the estimates financially are gonna be, are at um we're already at fifteen percent of all restaurants have closed permanently, and it's gonna go to thirty percent. That's nationally, and of course, we're gonna be much harder hit in Massachusetts or other places. So on the comment of four thousand dollars, and we'll start with a program that's a hundred thousand dollars, I think you're talking about the wrong, I don't wanna say order of magnitude here, but I calculated that there are ninety businesses at minimum who are very hard-hit enacted, probably down anywhere between twenty, forty-five percent and a hundred percent. Those includes nail salons, hairdressers, um, restaurants, uh retail stores like me. There's ninety of them, so right there, four thousand each is three hundred and sixty thousand. I'm probably missing in that calculation, and John uh M. knows this. I'm probably missing other businesses that need help, whether it be a gym, uh whether they be dentists. Uh, other businesses are not calculated in that. I left them off because of various reasons of not being sure. But my point is, is that, A, I would encourage you to meet as frequently as possible to solve this as fast as possible. You are not gonna get this perfect, you're gonna make all sorts of errors. There are all sorts of errors going on out there. I talked to a wealth manager the other day who got under the payroll protection program, and he told me lots of wealth managers have done it. I'm not sure how their businesses are hit, you know, they're probably not. But it it seems um that urgency is important, and I do think the government, federal government, did a good job of being urgent and getting money out there, and that's what they're trying to do. And I would encourage you to do the same thing. So these questions to Nina and John need So these questions to Nina and John need to be answered immediately, and, uh, and to help these businesses, and second, the Board of Selectmen needs to decide quickly. Thank you.
John, a question for John, what would be, um, your suggested number?
Uh, the the total amount?
What what would you say to get this going, you know, to to get?
So let let me do a just back-of-the-envelope calculation here for you. If I calculate ninety businesses that are clear-cut, probably deserve four thousand without even thinking about it, on average, probably some more, some less, right? If you're a small nail salon, you might have been hit less. If you're a larger restaurant, let's say, a, uh, a Rapsgallion, you probably are hit more. Um, so let's assume four thousand average. I do think four thousand is probably a fairly fair number, you know, I don't think most businesses expect to be completely bailed out and made whole, absolutely not. But, uh, for example, my rent, uh, so you have real numbers, my rent per month is six thousand seven hundred dollars per month. So I'm out, you know, just rent alone, that doesn't count utilities, all sorts of other things, you know, so four thousand to me, you know, is, you know, I I'm out for the last three months, let alone going forward, you know, twenty, call it twenty thousand. So you're you're getting a perspective that you're helping me with twenty percent of my cost of rent. It's still meaningful, it's still good, uh, so I'm not knocking the four thousand number, but I would argue that there are probably a hundred to a hundred and fifty businesses who need that money. So I would initially put aside six hundred thousand dollars if I were you.
Peter?
Uh, John, the the competing, uh, the the what's competing for this money is town operations. I'm hearing that the lottery is weighed out, they're not selling lottery tickets, that is the source of funding for local aid. And so we're expecting huge cuts in local aid, that's not a big hit to the town, I think it's like a million and a half bucks for the town or something. Um, but I'm, the schools get a lot more percentage of their budget from the state and and, uh, in local aid or school assistance. Um, I'm expecting that to be cut seriously. Town has costs for personal protective equipment, police officer overtime, extra employees to track, uh, COVID, uh, you know, relationships, uh, so the problem is this this insidious virus is is is, uh, you know, destroying everything. Um, and the town has to be conscious that we can continue to operate, we can have a a a a staffed police department, we can have a staffed fire department in the next fiscal year when all of these cuts are going to come down like a ton of bricks on the town. So, um, that's the competing interest. If you use five hundred thousand dollars of this to help the businesses, and I understand that's a worthy goal, um, the town, uh, may not, uh, be able to make up for lost revenue.
I I would just, let me just comment that I think, I I hear what you're saying, the difference is, there, you have other ways of making up for lost revenue by raising taxes. We haven't, these businesses will go go bankrupt. I I'm just, I will send around to the Board of Selectmen how many four-lease sales there are in town, and I will also add to it the number of businesses I've heard about that are going under. If if you think the town's going to look great with all these four-lease signs, then
Probably the same commercial.
I I just think you have other alternatives.
Wait a minute.
And you should think about them.
I just want to say the same commercial businesses will have to pay the higher taxes to itself.
Nina, did you have something to add? No, all right.
Nina, but 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 right now, Nina, we can't use our two point one million dollar CARES allocation, um, to, um, to plug revenue shortfalls or to cover, um, the normal expenses that are in the budget, is that correct?
Correct. You can only use it for expenditures that were unanticipated, unbudgeted, or specifically solved, um, um, the public health response in emergency.
So on it, we we could use it to cover unanticipated expenses on account of the COVID emergency?
Correct, unbudgeted.
Unbudgeted, okay.
So that, uh, just so I understand, just to repeat back what something Peter said, so the example of, uh, the cutbacks, uh, because people aren't getting, buying as many lottery tickets, and you're not getting as much revenue, it can't be used for them? Is that correct, Nina?
Right, right now, that is the case. There is talk about, um, states and localities putting pressure on the federal government to expand their, um, rules and and parameters around the use of CARES Act funds to act as a revenue supplement for, um, local governments, but there's been no determination on that yet. Um, I think that is what the state is is encouraging towns to think about, though, is is essentially make sure all the funds, um, are not necessarily expended because we are trying to, um, expand the the eligibility to include revenue.
Right, but that's that's hopefully in the future, but as of now, any shortfalls in the budget because we don't get, ACT does not get money from the state, as Peter said, that is not covered anyways. So your examples, Peter, of what you could use it for are not eligible right now.
Well, I'm talking about on-budgeted expenses, overtime, extra staff to look for the Health Department, uh, personal protective equipment for all the things that we don't have in the budget that we're spending additional money.
I, yeah, I understand that, yeah.
So right now, we're looking at four thousand dollars a business?
Proposal is to to put together a grant program that provides for up to four thousand, so someone may apply for two thousand, but we would like to start with up to four thousand, and we'd ask the board to vote an initial amount, uh, in the range that you're comfortable. I had suggestions seventy-five thousand, uh, there's no suggestions.
Uh, John, I think there are two more people that would like to speak.
Okay.
Uh, Ray Koby, did you want to speak?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Um, I would, um, listening, I I want to do two things, and I'm speaking as a as someone who works for a very small business here in ACT, okay, so that's why I'm jumping in. I want to reiterate quite honestly, listening to this conversation is the epitome of the frustration of the small business owner. Um, the, I work for, the the company I work for is Coco Fitness, right next door to AAA, which is next door to Blackburn, if you if you know where that is. Our biggest expense is rent. The PPP program was useless to us, our owner went and got a loan, but he can only use no more than twenty-five percent of that loan toward rent, and rent is like ninety percent of his expenses. Um, we had a discussion today, literally, should we just shut down? Um, because the pressure now is, our revenue's down like ninety-five percent because if people can't go to the gym, they don't want to pay their membership. So our source of revenue is gone, so I I wonder, what John Reagan said, I could not emphasize, speed right now is important. I would urge not before, maybe make it five thousand dollars. I'm, my ears perked up saying, how could we potentially be eligible? Because we are in a in a, really, I mean, I had the conversation today because we're technically in phase three, I talked to the Board of Health today, what can we do? I mean, uh, these businesses are literally scrambling for their lives. So, um, and and the problem is, I think the federal government was urgent, but they put restrictions that are turning out to be not realistic. So it's like, oh shit, pardon my language, sorry. You know, the 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 small business provision got caught in politics, saying we got to protect the the workers, but if you're a business where most of your overhead is not workers, then the program's not working for you. So something like this, I'm intrigued by from the standpoint of our business, could this be a lifeline if we get open to get us the next two or three months? So I, but I I I, what John said more than anything else, urgency, if it, we need to get answers, we need to have a process that it's not going to take us three months to get an answer if we go to the town to do something, because then it's going to be too late. Because in the long run, we're all dead, so to speak, and we're pretty close right now. Um, and and I think this is the lifeblood of the vibrancy of the town. Uh, so I I just, listening to the conversation, there was a lot of, well, could we use it this bucket or that bucket, or this bucket or that bucket, and and who and what and where, it's just the kind of thing that a small business owner just says, I can't deal with the bureaucracy, and I'm drowning. So I I, the two comments were, I would make it fi- up to five thousand personally, and to give you a perspective, our annual revenue is around a little under a million dollars. Uh, we have three employees, um, so we, it was not a lot of people, but we have a lot of people who use our club. So, anyway, that's that that's, I just wanted, that's, I just wanted to emphasize the the urgency and, um, back up a lot of what John said. And for a start, I think seventy-five to hundred thousand dollars a town is a good place to start.
Thank you. Okay. One more, Tara?
Uh, hi, it's Tara, and, um, I was going to say, uh, there are four hundred seniors that get circuit breaker, just to give you an indication of of the level of poverty. Uh, and according to the same numbers that we're looking at in the HPP, we're talking hundreds of people that are close to homelessness. So I urge you to add a zero to both the, um, rent relief and the businesses. Um, I I feel like the idea of added expenses, at least in the FinCon meetings, I've been sitting in, the Finance Committee meetings that I've been sitting in, I've thought I heard something like forty thousand dollars on PPE and other COVID-related expenses. Um, I think we should be giving out money, uh, now as soon as possible to save our businesses and and keep people in their homes. Uh, we can figure out how to deal with town operations next. Thank you.
All right, anyone else?
Is is Mike Majors on available?
He he is, he is on, he hasn't raised his hand.
Speak up, Mike.
He's now raised his hand.
And the reason I say that is that this is money that we go get, it's not money that's coming from local operations. Yes, uh, the town operations would come from local operations if we need it, but we may not even need it.
Okay. Mike?
Thank you.
Yeah, I think I think that your businesspeople are on the right track. Urgency obviously is the, um, is the issue here, and is, you know, I think what what they really need to do, and it's probably out of your control, is they need to be able to sell. You know, retail stores need to maybe have sidewalk sales, restaurants need to maybe expand outdoor seating, a lot of these, um, uh, ideas wouldn't cost the town any money, they just have to be a little, even temporarily flexible on some of their zoning issues or sort of health guidelines, just allowing, uh, businesses open, you know, to get people in the door. Um, there should be no difference between going into, um, a house, a kitchen outlet supplier versus going into a Walmart. Why can't they go in one without and not the other? It's just the whole, you know, it's just the small business owners, you know, being unfairly treated, uh, there's the economies of scale, the bigger corporations have have, um, you know, lots of reserves in the bank to cover, to cover, um, you know, temporary, downturns in business, but the small business person, you know, goes from week to week, and they're not, they're not expected to, you know, have a hundred and twenty days or or six months of revenue that or or that would cover their operating cost, um, you know, with with no income. It's just unreasonable and an unreasonable expectation. So, um, I think we need to somehow quantify, you know, what is the typical rent for a small business? And, you know, if we have some, maybe create some kind of sliding scale based on, you know, a mom and pop with a two or three-person, uh, operation would be different than, you know, someone that has maybe fifty employees or, but, um, whatever it is, just do something and do it now.
Thank you.
How high would you go, Mike, in the initial funding?
Well, you know, if, uh, that's why, you know, I really don't know what the average rent is, but assuming it's four to four to eight thousand, maybe, you know, six thousand, um, is a nice round number. Um, but, uh, I don't know, I I, you you need to sort of quickly survey some of these businesses, and I'm sure, like, John would, but might have those numbers, uh, for restaurants at least, but, um, the Chamber of Commerce probably has numbers on, uh, you know, what the average rent is, how how big these spaces are, and go from there. But, uh, maybe we need to assign a sort of an executive board that can, you know, like a quick-response team, that, you know, so you don't need as a whole big body, uh, every two weeks or every week, but there could be a a s- a small team of experts that, uh, would be gathering data and ready to come up with an action plan and a, you know, spreadsheet of this is, these are the businesses, this is what the needs are, and, uh, you you're all going at, uh, in one block.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, um, if I may, Chair, um, we, so the proposal before you is to ask the board to authorize a set amount of money and allow us to go to work and and get it done. There are several things that, as we discussed tonight, need to be worked out and need to be finalized in terms of eligibility and what an application looks like, and we'd be prepared to get that work started right away. Uh, in terms of order of magnitude, uh, my recommendation was in the range of seventy-five thousand dollars, which which is is a small program, if potentially you could see it that way. Uh, we also don't have necessarily the staff capacity to do a a huge program, and we may even need additional support to implement this program. Um, as I mentioned earlier, we do have a contractor working for us on the rental assistance program, there's no such, uh, contract in place for this program, and we're going to rely on, at least initially, on our on our own staff. It may be something we need to bring in some help to get done, but I think in the interests of what I've heard a few people say is urgency, uh, we'd like to, now that we've understood that we can use this, we found out on Friday, that was like three days ago, uh, we're asking you tonight to move forward, and we want to keep going. Um, so that's that's what's before you tonight.
So if if we vote on the seventy-five K for small business tonight, we can certainly modify that as we move along and you learn more.
Y- yes, that's what I'm suggesting, and also that we have another idea that I wanted to bring up tonight after this discussion concludes.
Okay, David?
Well, I'd be favorable a little bit more, like a like a hundred thousand, uh, dollars. Um, I'd be interested in that, uh, you know, I think that we could expand the program depending on the statistics we we see in the be- in the beginning of the program, and I would like, I don't, not to be answered tonight, as to whether, if necessary, if we needed to hire a contractor to implement a program, would that be, those costs be covered as well?
I believe they would be, uh, that's definitely related to what we're trying to do here, so that may be the 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 path forward here.
Okay, is there a motion? Dean's hand is up.
I I I will move that, uh, Board of Selectmen approve the sum of seventy-five thousand dollars, uh, to start a, uh, business relief program, uh, which we feel is necessary and and, uh, provides a public purpose to deal with the COVID-nineteen issue.
Is there a second? Second.
Would you take a, would you take a friendly amendment and move that up to a hundred?
Whatever.
Thank you.
Okay, so the motion is for a hundred thousand dollars for small business relief, and it's seconded? Yes, I second it. Okay. So will the clerk call the roll?
Mr. Benson?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Berry?
Aye.
Ms. Gardner?
Aye.
Mr. Trotter?
Aye.
Passed unanimously.
Okay.
Thank, thank you, we'll get to work on that. Uh, so the third program, uh, related to trying to help out our businesses, uh, that we wanted to talk about tonight is, there's a huge amount of restrictions on occupancy that even as the phases come through, uh, phase two, phase three, we expect our retail and our dining establishments to have to operate at reduced capacity, which which limits their ability to generate revenue. So we have a few ideas that we'd like to implement, uh, including allowing people to use. So we have a few ideas that we'd like to implement, uh, including allowing people to use more outdoor space and, and doing it in a way that allows them to get permission or, or allowing them to do that in a way that we probably wouldn't otherwise and our regulations don't necessarily provide for. So we're looking for opportunities to let dining establishments and retail shops use parking spaces, sidewalks, grass, uh, anything they can that, that is, uh, can be done in a safe way. And we'd like to allow them to do that with, with a, a quick review by our land use team to make sure that it's complying with ADA and certain other minimum standards. Uh, but just as a way to temporarily help people, uh, take their business outside, which, uh, would may provide additional opportunities for them to, um, come out of this and, 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 um, survive during this tough time.
Is there a motion? Dean?
Yep, I would, I would move that we authorize the town manager to work with town staff to, uh, relax some of the zoning requirements involving, uh, use of outside space around existing businesses.
Is there a second? Is, is there a second?
Exactly.
Okay.
I, I, I'd just like to offer an, uh, an, a friendly amendment that says for the duration of the COVID-nineteen emergency.
Okay, he's accepted that. Any further discussion, all those, oh, will the clerk call the roll?
Mr. Benson?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Berry?
Aye.
Ms. Gardner?
Aye.
Mr. Trotter?
Aye, unanimous.
Good, good. All right, John, anything else on your list?
Uh, I think that's it, thank you very much. Yeah, we have some work to do, we're gonna get started right away.
So, so John, wh- wh- when do the grants go, uh, the requests have to be made for, uh, um, for these two, um, uh, pockets of money?
We have to submit our application to the state by the fourth or the fifth and, um, but we could start planning on the, we can start rolling it out, you know, right, as soon as we figure out the application process.
Okay, a- and then wh- when is there an, another application round?
I don't know exactly, but it's later this summer.
So, so like the hundred thousand we, we would like, would, would then get for small business, um, then we'd have, if it, if the program goes well, we'd have to wait later in the summer for an application for another round, is that right?
We can talk to finance about that. I think there may be ways, if the program's established and it's approved, uh, there may be ways to handle that differently. But yes.
Okay.
Until then, I'll get back to you on.
With that in mind, would there be any consideration of asking for more than a hundred for, for businesses?
In the application?
Uh, no, I mean, among the board members, if they'd wanna increase the, the hundred thousand dollars.
I'd, I'd certainly be open to considering that, uh, but I'd like to see the statistics from the first round here, you know, how, how many businesses applied, what their circumstances were, that kind of thing.
I mean, the circumstances are that they're, they're, they're on the brink.
No, no, but I, 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 I understand that, but I'd like to know, you know, uh, how, how many of them, you know, what part of their business was open, they, you know, as, as, uh, uh, John Ragan was saying, is, is revenue cut by ninety-seven percent or forty-five percent? What, 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 what the statistics are there? I mean, I'm not saying, I, I mean, I would just, I think it's important to know, um, that's all.
Peter, did you have your hand up?
Uh, yeah, I, I thought I was hearing from John that, um, it may not be the amount, it may just be the outline of the program. So I, I, you know, we can start with a hundred thousand, maybe able to just add more without going back with another application to the state. So maybe that question answered.
Yes, yeah. Anything else?
There was an item ten on the agenda?
Yes.
A big item.
So at the meeting last week, we, uh, I gave a presentation about the FY twenty, uh, financial situation and proposed, uh, revisions to the FY twenty-one budget. I think the next morning, you met with ALG, the Acting Leadership Group, and we talked about several things. Uh, one of them was coming back to the Board of Selectmen tonight and asking, uh, for formal consideration of the revised budget that I presented so that we can then bring that forward to, back to the leadership group on, um, early June when we're scheduled to meet again.
It's, it's June fourth.
June fourth. And so I can go back through those changes just briefly. Um, the primary changes to the budget were the capital. Uh, we, we reduced the appropriations from free cash in the fifteen thousand on the, from the sustainability program because we're gonna use a grant to offset that cost. So we're, we're all set there. Uh, we reduced the complete streets and intersections program by a hundred and fifty thousand. Uh, we're gonna get, you know, start on a couple of those projects in this fiscal year. We're comfortable with that reduction, uh, going forward. And we'll, we'll have to just continue to look at, um, future years. And then because of the way that we had to do the Kelly's, uh, not the Kelly's Corner, the, um, yes, the Kelly's Corner. So the Kelly's Corner project, the right-of-way acquisitions, we initially programmed in for one point three million. Uh, several things happened over the last few months, including, uh, the right-of-way acquisition process being transferred from the town to the state for the huge parcel, uh, owned by Edens, including the, the right-of-way for Community Lane. And then also the parcel for the, the future site of North Lex Bank. Uh, the, the state's taking those over. That takes a huge shift of, of funding that we were budgeting to do acquisitions away from us. So we were able to lower our amount down to six hundred thousand for Kelly's Corner right-of-way acquisitions. That reduction reduces our necessary borrowing amount, uh, by approximately fifty thousand next year. So the total reduction is two hundred and fifteen thousand, which, which we'd wanna plug in to the ALG plan if, if the Board of Selectmen approves it. The other changes that we wanted to bring to the, uh, leadership group includes some changes to our, uh, planning for revenues, given what we just talked about, what may be happening at the state level. We want to dial back our revenue assumptions to, to just level fund. Uh, we had programmed a modest increase in, in state aid accounts and, uh, also a new growth. And we'd like to reduce those back to just, uh, current year and level those off. So, uh, those are the main changes that we wanna bring forward to ALG next week if the Board of Selectmen approves those. The effect on the operating budget and total municipal spending package, it was initially programmed and approved by the Board of Selectmen Finance Committee a few months ago as a two point nine four percent increase. The changes, uh, we discussed last week and I just outlined, uh, go make the increase only two point three four percent, uh, year over year. And one other item, the borrowing that you just approved or the, the borrowing you approved will reduce our tax impact in FY twenty-one because we're not going to be needing to collect the full amount of revenue that we expected to pay for the North Active Fire Station because we're going short-term for a year. So those are the changes to the ALG plan.
David?
I could make a motion if you wanna make a motion.
Go ahead.
Um, I, I move that we change the, um, uh, fiscal twenty-one, uh, uh, budget from what we did in March to level fund, um, uh, make assumptions to level fund revenue, uh, uh, sources, um, uh, uh, and to reduce the cap to a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars.
Is there a second?
Second.
John seconds, any further discussion? Will the clerk call the roll?
Mr. Benson?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Berry?
Aye.
Ms. Gardner?
Aye.
Mr. Trotter?
Aye, unanimous.
All right. Anything else, John?
What else does we have, local businesses? No, that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Thank everyone for participating, thanks Nina.
Thank you Nina.
I move to it, John.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Oh, good.
All right. Will the clerk call the roll?
Mr. Benson?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Berry?
Aye.
Ms. Gardner?
Aye.
Mr. Trotter?
Aye, unanimous.
We're adjourned, thank you all.
Hey, good night, everyone.
Good night.